Good evening, and welcome to this meeting of the Common Council of the City of Huntington, June 25th, 2024. Prior to the beginning of the business meeting, we'll have an invocation led by Pastor Shilamar Holderly, Trinity United Methodist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Kristi McElhinney. Those who wish to participate at this time may rise.
Let us pray. Lord God, as we come before you this evening, we pray that you would give us your wisdom and your guidance. We desire to lead this city in the way that you are calling us to go, and so we pray, Lord, that you would open doors before us and make us bold to walk through the doors that you are opening, that our city might benefit from the work that we do here tonight and all throughout the year. Bless each person seated around these tables tonight as they make decisions for us and as we have discussion, that your wisdom will prevail. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge.
... the United States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation, God, in full with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and with that then, we will call the meeting to order, beginning with the roll call. Kristi?
Brodigam.
Present.
Chapman.
Present.
Felton.
Present.
Funk.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Ike is absent. Renssberger?
Present.
And first item under the business is consideration of the minutes from the previous meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the June 11th minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion and consideration of the June 11th meeting minutes. Not hearing any discussion or changes, we'll call the question in favor of adoption of the minutes as presented. Kristi?
Chapman?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Brodigam?
Yes.
Thank you. And prior to tonight's meeting, we did have an executive session, and so we have minutes from that that also need consideration and adoption. Is there a motion to consider and adopt the June 25th, 2024 executive session minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion and consideration of the minutes from the executive session. Not hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of adoption.
Felton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Brodigam?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving along to consideration of reports from committees, boards, or commissions. Charlie?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Dwight?
Nothing.
PJ?
Yeah, Solid Waste has been fun. If you guys know, there is a survey going on online right now, it's on the Huntington County Commissioners Facebook page. Kevin will have, Kevin said that it ends Friday afternoon at some point. There's a lot of talks on moving the West Park Drive Recycling Center out, back, back out to the landfill. Scott Husband, the Director of Solid Waste, he would be able to manage it, hire somebody that would help separate recycling better. The main issue with the recycling on West Park Drive is all the trash that is piling up in those dumpsters. The contract is with GFL, and that contract is up later this year, October, November, With all the contamination that has been in the recycling bins, Kristi is expecting a increase in the renewal of the contract. So that is one of the main reasons we are looking at recycling everything ourselves. Just one instance of some of the contamination. Scott reported, following the dump truck, or the trash truck, after they picked up the recycling there at West Park Drive, due to that being contaminated, that trash truck ended up going to another business and picking up their trash dumpster, putting it all together. So, we don't know if our recycling at West Park Drive was contaminated at the point, at that point, but it all became contaminated no matter what, picking up that dumpster. So there's a lot of lack of trust also, seems to be an issue. So, if everyone could go to the County Commissioners Facebook page, fill out the survey, I think Kevin said there's approximately 400 surveys in right now, 300, my fault. Friday's the deadline for that, so, that's it.
Thank you, PJ. Todd?
Do they have any strategies as far as, I mean, because it's a lot more inconvenient to drive out there compared to just at West Park Drive? So, I mean, that's what I've heard from people. So, do they have another plan for that, or is it just so inconvenient at West Park that they probably will have to do it either way? You know?
So, the, as we look at the, that is part of what the survey looks at as well, is what the burden would be on residents as we do this. And so, Solid Waste Commission is a, is a countywide effort that has representation from incorporated areas like the city, Town of Andrews, Roanoke, et cetera, and also county residents who are represented with county commissioners. So, West Park Drive itself, while located in the city of Huntington, is a bit redundant since Huntington residents have curbside recycling, ironically with the same company, even though originally it wasn't. At this time, we also have, I believe, Markel and Roanoke have curbside recycling as well. So, there are other counties that have curbside pickup recycling countywide, and they do it at the county level. At this point, you have Huntington City residents effectively paying twice for the convenience of the drop-off point and curbside recycling. Some residents out in the county may find that it's less convenient to go out to 300 in the solid waste district to drop it off, but they might find themselves closer to one of the other drop-off points. So, for instance, a friend of mine who was commenting on Facebook about how it would be inconvenient to add, I think, an extra 10 minutes for her drive to it, she would actually be closer to Andrews at that point and could drop off at their facility. So, there's multiple points around the county that are available for folks. It would require city residents or businesses that are using it to go out to there. The benefits of it is that it's already staffed, it can be monitored with cameras, and the, there's some additional components that we can do to ensure that the recycling actually gets recycled. That's one of the main concerns that we have, is if we're paying for a service that because of contamination that's being added at the, at the site as it gets dropped off by folks, it really punishes everyone and nobody is benefiting from the program and we're paying extra for it. It's a pretty big frustration nationwide in recycling programs right now. And then the hope is that this would also allow us to avoid the rate increase on the contract and potentially other costs, so. Other questions or thoughts regarding the Solid Waste Commission, because we, PJ and I are representing the city on that commission, and we do welcome that feedback.
Another thing with the separation that we can control ourselves is that Scott has been in contact with Kerry Miller up at Innovative Packaging about getting a cardboard designated recycling, that way it helps out a local company as well that's right here in Huntington, that they can utilize it, so.
So have a corrugated drop-off at their facility?
It would be at the solid waste facility still, but they would have a 40-foot trailer out there to collect.
Corrugated.
And then they would be able to pick it up.
Because that's the only thing I recycle anyway, is I have large corrugated that I don't want to stuff in my bin.
Yeah, they're too big for the bins, you don't want to cut them all up, right?
Right, I don't want to cut it all, so if I could just take them to a trailer, that'd be great.
Yeah. And then the other piece of this is because of the, the contamination and the coverage of it, we've had to restrict the hours of access on West Park Drive, so that's made it very difficult for folks. But if we go out to the solid waste, they're already open, they have weekend hours, they have, I believe, at least one evening a week as well with extended hours, so it would give more flexibility for when you can drop off too. So, but again, we also recognize that it does present a burden or inconvenience, and that's why we want the public input. And so, thankfully, we noted earlier, we've got about 300 survey results that we'll be sorting through and bringing to the commission, because, just because it makes sense to us business-wise, doesn't necessarily mean it's the right decision that the public wants.
Thanks for the work, gentlemen.
Todd?
Nothing here.
Andrew?
Nothing.
David?
Nothing.
Okay. Not aware of any petitions or comments from citizens this evening?
No, sir.
Okay. First item under old business, we do have an update from Mr. Harper regarding the opioid litigation. Mike?
Evening, everyone, thank you. Everyone will recall several years ago, the city opted in to a lawsuit against defendants who were manufacturers and distributors of opioids. A Kroger company was among those defendants, and a few months ago, Kroger determined that it was going to settle the lawsuit, and the purported amount is 1.2 billion, spread over 36 states, that they have places where they do business in those states. Now, because the city has opted in to the litigation, the state statute concerning opioid settlements controls accordingly, the city will follow along with the Indiana Attorney General who, just this week, decided to join the Kroger settlement. So, the city won't have anything to do this evening, it won't have to make a determination because the general, the Attorney General did that for the city. So, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Harper?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. First item under new business is first reading of ordinance 7C24. Kristi?
Ordinance 7C24, this ordinance have adopted would amend Section 98.21D of the City of Huntington, Indiana's Code of Ordinances to reduce and clarify the notice requirements for applications for naturalized landscapes.
Is there a motion to bring ordinance 7C24 to the fore for consideration and adoption?
So moved.
Motion and second. Director Kepinger is here with us this evening.
Mr. Harper's prepared an amendment reducing the notification distance under Section 98.21D of the naturalized landscape portion of the city's code, as you had sort of indicated at your last meeting, lowering that distance from 400 feet to 200 feet. That's pretty much it, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Further discussion or question by council members? Okay, not hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of adoption as presented. Kristi?
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Brodigam?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Felton?
Yep.
Just so we can clear the books, is there support from council to suspend the rules and allow for second and final reading of ordinance 7C24 this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Further consideration and discussion on the motion to suspend the rules to allow for second and final reading? Not hearing any, we'll call the question in favor of suspension of the rules. Kristi?
Johnson?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Brodigam?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
And with that then, is there a motion for second and final reading of ordinance 7C24?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion and consideration of 7C24? Not hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of adoption on second and final reading. Kristi?
Renssberger?
Yes.
Brodigam?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving along to the miscellaneous portion of the agenda, this evening, we do have initial presentation and discussion around the work of the DORA Subcommittee. So, council members have been presented with a draft ordinance to that effect, and we'll go over the work of the Subcommittee as well as some of the current updates. One thing to note for council, especially as this is a draft, we do have the ability and have submitted this draft to the state for preapproval, to ensure that whatever we bring to council is something that will be adopted by the Alcohol and Tobacco Commission of the state. So, with that, is there a motion to open discussion of the DORA draft ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, and with that then, opening discussion, we'll go ahead and have Director Kepinger lead off, and then we'll have Councilman Chapman share some of the conversations and work of the Subcommittee.
So, what I particularly have and placed on your seats before the meeting is the most latest revised boundary map of the DORA. The mayor can go into the details, but we learned late yesterday that the Huntington Baptist Church was not willing to waive its 200-foot buffer right for the DORA, and so I've adjusted the map to carve out. Did field a question from Dwight today about the distances and how those are measured. There is a unique provision in the state statute that specifies that as long as 85 feet from the wall of the premise to the wall, or to the boundary of the DORA in this instance, is, exists, and within that, at least a 30-foot road, which Warren Street qualifies, then it's not 200, it's essentially 85. And so, this map represents that. I didn't want to include any physical building locations or areas that could be subject to the DORA that would be in that. So there is a bit of a carve-out, and with that carve-out and not reflected in your amendment or your ordinance draft tonight, is the fiscal, you know, from this line to this line to this line. So we'll work to do that as, as we go through. Again, it's, I think we're kind of through the fluid, this is probably the only real thing, unless council has opinions one way or another about the boundary, you know, Charlie will back me up. The committee discussed, and Todd as well, discussed extensively what that boundary would look like, how wide of a stab to take of it, or how narrow. We initially cast a much larger net, and we decided to back it and back in, we worked with Adam and Tim Bischoff about how the required statutory signage will go up and things like that. And so, at the end of the day, what we thought was, let's, let's keep it somewhat manageable, we can always expand it in, in the future if there is a need to. So, generally speaking, the boundaries are the south curb line of West Park Drive, the east curb line of Cherry Street, coming down to the Fountain Center, going next to the Old Duke Energy, extending across to the south bank of the Little River, taking that over, next to the county parking lot, and then running up basically the west curb line of Warren Street, with the exception of that carve-out, and I'll zoom in on that just a little bit better to show you what that is. So, the, effectively, the carve-out would be the old post office, the former Harder Law Office, and the actual physical location of Z Place. So those are the, the actual areas that are carved out. Other than that, I, I don't know if you want me to talk about the events-type stuff and how it's set up, or?
I think, I think Charlie and Todd will be able to cover that portion.
Questions for me on the map, before I DORA my Explorer back that way? All right, thank you.
Charlie? Todd?
Todd's delegated to me. If you, if you look at the draft ordinance number seven, you'll see dates and hours of operation, along with the designated area for the DORA. That was a point of good conversation on what dates, time of day, that sort of thing. That's all things that we reviewed, and we felt that we hopefully have covered it all. Some of the days that were brought up, I didn't necessarily think of, but we had some input from citizens and, and local folks who suggested that, you know, we might want to include those. And much like the DORA District itself, we'll just have to kind of see how things are adopted and how it plays when it actually... The district comes on down across the river, and of course, we have a committee that's working on riverfront, how that might come into play, hopefully to our benefit. So there might be some of this area that may come into some sort of development along the river. Maybe the dog, the dog will come back, who knows, there might be a restaurant out that way, so. Essentially, I think that Heritage Days and the Music in the City evenings are probably going to be the main drivers and for all of this. We've gotten good feedback from all of the establishments that serve liquor. The next piece will be to talk to more of the other businesses, because if they want to opt into the DORA and want to allow people to come into their establishment, then they can put up a DORA sign that says, okay, you can come into our establishment. That leads into the next piece is a signage, notifications. We've got to have signage put on the boundaries of the door, so people know that they're leaving a DORA and that they can't enter the door across the street. So, crossing Park Drive going north, we'll have a receptacle there, drop your DORA container in the receptacle, so that you don't cross Park, break the law. So inside that area, you can, you can have your DORA cup, that's another part of the, of the ordinance that's, that was in the state ordinance, that you leave an establishment with liquor, it has to be an identified DORA cup, so people know that when you go in and out of other establishments, walking in with a beer you got out of your car, that it's, So, there'll be some expense in signage and receptacles and things like that, I think it'll be... Any questions? As the mayor said, the Department of Revenue is reviewing it, we appreciate that, it's best to have any sort of possible contentions or disputes settled ahead of time, and like to know that things are okay with the Department of Revenue. I see PJ over there smiling.
You mean the Alcohol and Tobacco Commission?
Yeah, those guys too.
Yeah, they're, they're fun.
Okay, that's all I have.
So I think...
Any questions?
Charlie, could you speak a little bit to some of the, the committee's conversations with members of the public that have attended, especially regarding some of the misunderstandings or confusion around this, what it does, what it doesn't do?
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of people, and people I've talked to outside the committee, as, as people have approached me, some people are concerned that we're just opening up downtown for drinking, just a lot of drinking. And, and when you start to talk with folks, explain the boundary of the DORA, the intentions of the designated area, they realize that it's, it's creating a convenience, and that we really don't anticipate that it's going to have wild parties going on, it just offers a bit of convenience for patrons who are in an establishment, your brick house, want to walk down the street, go to Legends, got a half a beer, well, yeah, it's convenient to get a DORA cup, take your beverage with you and continue on, particularly during the, one of those event, event weekends and that.
But it's primarily special event times, it's not, not all the time.
Special events, yes.
Right, so.
And, and further, and I'm, I don't, I don't know which number it is offhand, but there's a, written into the ordinance is the ability to have an event outside this that you can apply to, to the Board of Works.
Right, the Board of Works is the check, yeah.
The Board of Works is, as with everything the administration administers, they are the gatekeepers to the rules.
And basically, when we, when we put this together with the, the business owners and the people that had concerns, like, some of the other towns that have done this have been every day, 24, all day long, from 12 to midnight for the whole year, and we didn't want to do that, we wanted to keep it concise, simple, start here, and we could always expand it later, but we wanted to keep it simple, so it didn't seem like we're just having a drink fest or something like that, so. And it's really pretty much coincides with different holidays and different events that are down there already, so people can just enjoy themselves and not, you know, and if they walk right outside that DORA area, they're, the laws are the laws, they're the same thing, as soon as they walk across, it's applicable, they can get in their cars, I mean, it's, it's all the same. So enforcement's not going to be a problem either, but we try to keep it really simple and small for now, so it wasn't, so there weren't the problems that other people, I think, could have. So, and I think, for the most part, we've done a pretty good job of, of that, keeping it small, and, and the business owners really gave a lot of good input down there to help figure everything out, so, because they deal with it every day. So it was, it was a really good, good meetings, so.
I was not at these meetings, where are the cups coming from? Are business owners supplying them and putting a sticker on them? How, how is that being figured out? Like, are they my own 16-ounce plastic cups, and we just put a DORA sticker on it?
So, by the state statute, they actually have to be specifically printed and branded, and so, what was discussed in the committee was that the idea of contacting five or six local designers, let them submit potential designs, and then do a vote or a contest, selecting one, and then making that basically a, a public use license that when you're ordering cups, you would be able to order them from various vendors with that logo on it. That way, the city doesn't become in the chain of supply.
And when it comes to supplying them, PJ, do you think distributors, local beverage distributors that distribute to you would be willing to participate in that?
I would think so.
Yeah.
I mean, our beer companies, I'll go five-star, they would definitely get involved in this.
Yeah. We haven't gotten quite that far.
Right.
But that was some of the things we talked about, that Fort Wayne has branded cups, and I think, I thought the city was buying them, I don't know why they would, when we have the distributors pick up the tab.
I would assume that if Fort Wayne is distributing the cups, Fort Wayne is charging for the cups.
Oh, fair enough.
But I don't know.
But that'll be our first approach, PJ, as we'll go to distributors.
Are you doing just local design companies, like four local in Huntington design companies?
I think, yeah, I think it's like five or six that we're going to reach out to for submissions, rather than just an open public contest, and we end up with Bodie McBoatface.
What if businesses just bought straight from those locations instead of the distributors?
Well, I think, to Charlie's point about the distributors, the, the ongoing question in matter is whether or not the distributors would sponsor the cups and underwrite those expenses. And so, what was raised in the committee then was, frankly, we need a clarification from the state on whether or not that's permissible, because for several of us in the room, it was news to learn that you can't have your bar's name and the distributor's name in too close a proximity in the bar, is our understanding, so, yeah. But since this isn't a specific drinking establishment, it's the DORA, they might be able to. That's one reason why we've kicked this to the state, kind of the history and background of this, and PJ knows this better than anyone in the room, but the, the laws of Indiana are often fascinating. It's a good word, polite word for it, regarding alcohol and alcohol sales and distribution, consumption. So part of what this stems from is actually a longstanding question in Indiana law, whether or not this was actually already allowable unless a local municipality had an ordinance against it. And if you've been to... And if you've been to Indy for various special events, you'll notice that they're actually walking for several blocks with a open beverage. And so I think eventually the State House looked at it and said, we need to have a process in place to give clarity for local municipalities to make the decision. And as Charlie noted, or I'm sorry, rather Todd noted, the majority of communities, it's either all or nothing the way the ATC has set this up. Either the DORA functions day in, day out, twelve to twelve, or it's not here. So we're trying a middle ground to test things out and see how we do with it.
As a business owner, I do like the schedule. As a bar business owner, I do like the schedule. One thing, it will be difficult to enforce because people will get into that mentality of, oh, I can just walk out on Market Street with a beer in my hand. Well, then you're putting me at risk as a bar owner. But if there's a way that somehow we can blast this and notify everybody, it's only allowed in the DORA cups, that's great. But getting the drunk customers on a Friday, Saturday night, that's not going to be easy sometimes. So as a business owner, that's my only concern really.
No, you raise a fair point. There's going to be a learning curve and people just have to know that a DORA cup is required to leave. The only thing that, that'll put the onus on your servers that when it's not an event night and somebody says, oh, I want a DORA cup, they have to say, sorry. And it's not a night you can get one. You'll just have to stay and finish and then move on. That's the only thing that'll happen.
And knowing a few of the folks that operate the street sweeper in the city, we can attest to occasionally folks taking beverages out even though we don't have a DORA, so. Further discussion or consideration of the draft before council this evening?
Chief Boxel, do you have any concerns or comments that like come to your mind quickly? But you don't see any major concerns with your police department with this DORA?
Yeah, thankfully, we're not doing it every day.
Yeah.
That's the best thing, I think.
And council, as you skim through this, something comes to mind the next time we have a meeting or if you just want to let Todd or myself know about some observations that you see, feel free to shoot us a note, let us know. We, you know, as the committee realize you can't see and know everything. So every time we have different people who've come and met with us, different things have been revealed that we might not necessarily thought of. So again, draft and we're always looking for input.
Is there an estimated time of when, if we get this approved, when this is going to start? The whole process of getting designs made, obviously we're waiting, you guys are waiting on the state, which trust me, we all never know how long that, they're going to take, but- That's the optimistic approach.
The conversations that we've been having with, with other local businesses has been, we're anticipating something next year.
I want to just add, I like the possibility of other events that the Board of Public Works and Safety will approve or not approve because I can see, having been on that board for a long time where it was previously, there are certain fundraisers that I think there are groups that will say, oh, okay, well, we'll do this downtown because we want this option, you know, car shows or a variety of other things. So, so there will be, I'm sure there'll be additional dates that will pop up as the word gets out once it's legal.
Okay. Well, as Councilman Chapman noted, continue to take this under consideration, advisement, get input from the public on this. Continue to also clarify that all other laws pertaining to the regulation and sale of alcohol and consumption of it in public places still would apply in this. And then as we move forward, again, the major caveat is we, we will be doing only what ATC says we're allowed to do. So this draft could change significantly if we bring it back to you. But depending on what they, what feedback they give us, so. Okay, anything else regarding that draft? Okay, not hearing any other. We've got one more item under miscellaneous this evening. We do have a gentleman with us today by the name Eric Long. So Eric, if you want to wave for council members so they know who you are, council will allow you to introduce yourselves after the meeting. But Eric is, is actually being appointed to assist cities and towns throughout Huntington County under a contract with the county commissioners that was funded last night at county council. And so the premise of this contract is that Eric is available to supplement local towns and cities as we work on significant projects. And so he's here primarily to assist with project management. So for the city, the three that we've identified readily are the steps we're taking forward on implementation of various pieces of the downtown master plan that was adopted earlier this year, in particular, as we pursue grant funds for Riverfront improvements and activation. The skate park that council is aware that Hunger Skate Parks is designing for us over at Yeoman Park. And then also just some of the, again, ongoing preliminary legwork around the community pool concept that the Rose Holman students presented to council. So there may be other projects in the future, but those are the three that we recognize have significance or need additional work here in the community. But they're also projects that require time and attention from another staff member. So we're glad to have Eric available to us on contract with the commissioners. For the first year, it is funded out of county funds. The second year, the city will have the option of looking at further engagement and contracts. So we get a good long time to work together and see whether or not it's a good working relationship. Any questions for council regarding Eric or his role in cooperation with the city and the county? Eric, I know I said I was going to let them introduce themselves later to you, but would you like to address council this evening on anything?
Just introduce myself. Really excited to be working with the county. As the mayor said, going to be working on a variety of quality of place initiatives, skate park, but county-wide focusing a lot on housing. I've worked with Wabash County on their Matchroom Eighty-Five Plan, which is a county-wide initiative to basically better position the county for grant funding from the state. And that's kind of what we're hoping to do here as well. So I'd like to meet with everybody at some point and get to know you and hear your perspective on what we can do to help. I look forward to that.
Thanks, Eric. Council members, again, you're welcome to get to know him outside of the meeting here. Anything else for the good of the order? Not hearing anything. Is there a motion for adjournment?
No move.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.